I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, supported by Councilmember Zalinski, to approve the request of the Catamaran Racing Association. Is there any discussion or questions?
I just have one comment. I'd like to ask the city attorney. We have a camping restriction. Are we violating our own ordinance by allowing camping on the beach property? And so should we be amending our ordinance?
I don't feel like I could answer that up here. I haven't considered that at all. It was your question.
1062.4 talks about camping and stuff like that. And I have no problem with them being there. I just wonder if we should maybe do this like we did our fireworks ordinance, that we add an addendum to that where it says by permitted use. I think we underutilize our beaches is what I'm going to say. And I'd like to figure out a way that we can utilize it more, but through permitted use, just not open it up.
I'd be satisfied if council was inclined to approve this, that you approve it, but I will look into the question that you have, and if we need to bring it back before council, we could do that if you're...
Well, the Fourth of July, the carnival, we know they're staying there. The carnival workers are staying at the beach. You know, it's just given, special event, that's how I look at it.
I'm not against it. I'm just saying that in the future, if we're going to be utilizing the property for events, whatever they may be, that we're basically doing that now, we're permitting it, where they're filling out a permit, an application, and we're allowing it. I just think it should be part of the ordinance, that that be allowed, just like we do for fireworks. I've watched Higgins Lake on YouTube, South Higgins Lake. I've watched the videos on YouTube. A real nice website. You can go and see all their events and what they're doing, and they go way too fast for me. I would not want to be on punch, for sure. But I have no hesitation.
Let me, noting your comments, let me take that and discuss that with Ms. Blakesley as well, and we can get back to you on that. If a change needs to be made, we cannot certainly consider that.
Thank you.
There was a notation in the request about being able to have a fire in the camping area. I would ask the same question in that regard. I know we've got several fire pits, but open fires are not permitted in the beach area. What sort of precautions or allowance are we making in this regard?
Well, the ones that we put out on the beaches, they were placed after consulting with the fire department and police department for the proper placement, so that's how we dealt with that. We would do the same thing on this request, would have the appropriate staff go down there and look at where it should be located.
Okay. I just want to make sure we don't end up with people deciding on their own to create another fire location other than where it's authorized.
No, I think in talking with this group, they understand it's a privilege to be where they're at, and I don't expect them to abuse that privilege. They've been very upfront in all their needs.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Do I need to amend my motion, approve camping for this event, or just the fact that their request is suited?
I think you're approving their request. I think that I'm satisfied with that. I'm sure the question that Councilmember Zalinski raised and report back to you.
Okay.
Shall we please take the roll? Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Pannier?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of Fire Department Pickup Truck Purchase. Three quotes were solicited for replacement pickup at the fire department. The low quote was from Grono Ford at $43,400. This included the vehicle, graphics, lighting, and radio installation, plus a slide-out rack for the bed and a topper on the back. This is budgeted as a cash purchase from the motor pool, the budget amount $60,000. Is there a motion to authorize the purchase?
On the motion that council take action to approve, authorized purchase of a 2017 Ford F-250 is $443,000 from Grono Ford.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, supported by Councilmember Whitlow, to approve the purchase.
What'd you say?
Forty-three.
Forty-three. Four thousand, three hundred, four hundred.
Forty-three thousand.
Forty-three thousand, four hundred dollars. Sorry.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, supported by Councilmember Whitlow, to approve the purchase of the 2017 Ford F-250 for $43,400. Is there any discussion or questions?
Mr. President? I have a couple of questions. Please don't miss a turp when I'm coming, though. I'm trying to figure out what this is all about. I'm looking at the bids. I noticed inconsistencies with the bidding process, or the co-process, whatever you want to refer to it as. Signature Ford has like a bed liner. Grono doesn't. The graphics. Amors Signs has Chevron, I believe they call it, Chevron striping. I actually had to look at Google that because I didn't know what it was. Grono doesn't have that on theirs. The inconsistencies is what...I don't see a spec sheet, so I don't know how we arrived at...we got different bids, we got different things added to each bid, and some things not added to the bids. Do we have a spec sheet?
I don't know that I have a spec sheet that I can give to you. I know what I told the firefighter to bid, and I signed that to Chris Jeffries, told him to bid for me a three-quarter ton, four-wheel drive, four-door pickup with graphics, radio, and turnkey package. I also told him that there would be councilmembers who wanted to know if we could set that stuff out. So for instance, if Grono gave me a package that said graphics for this, and electric for this, we want to get those bids also separately, so you can compare and see how much, if there's a savings between buying a vehicle or not.
And what I see when I go through here, and believe me, I spent many hours trying to sort it out, the inconsistencies, they're not bidding on the same things, the same truck. It's different. Bed liner for Signature Ford is not in Grono's bid. The chrome package is different. I can't figure out in Grono's bid, if he added tires to it on the first page, and then back he adds it as an option, he adds the all-terrain at $400 and something like that. So I don't know if he added it twice or what he did. I can't figure it out. And I guess the last thing I want to say is that I understand the need for turnkey. We also have another provider in Michigan that is in Mount Pleasant, much closer than Detroit, who does a turnkey operation, who is now in Lexington County, in Traverse City, and has an appointment tomorrow in Langton to start taking over their equipment.
Turnkey in terms of what, sir? In terms of electronics and radios?
No, sir.
Or cars?
For everything. They will do everything, is to sit down with you, they will talk to you about what you need, they will make sure you don't pay for anything you don't need, they will order the car for you for free. The car's not free, but they'll...they do all that for free. They don't charge you for that. And then they will, they'll give you an estimate, and you can either take it or not, but it's a turnkey. They'll even have the vehicle delivered to them, and they will turn it on then, put everything on it that you want, and bring it right to you. So what I'm saying, what I'm saying in essence is, there is another turnkey place to get a bid. Maybe we should have got it from another turnkey place. If you want a turnkey operation.
Well, we got two turnkey bids, and they were both state vendors. They were the two listed as state bid people.
And they were who?
Grono Ford and Signature Ford.
Yeah, but they're not turnkey. When you talk turnkey, you're talking like Grono, Grono, I can't say that. The guy in Detroit, he's doing everything. He's doing the graphics, he's doing everything, the vehicle. That's why I'm referring to his turnkey.
That's what I refer to, turn, that's what those bids are, from Signature and Grono.
Signature's not turnkey. They don't put on the graphics.
Does Signature not have graphics, Chris?
It's written right on.
Signature Ford and Grono Ford both use different outfitters. That's where they get their turnkey package from, from their outfitter supplier.
Grono, it says on your sheet here that Signature Ford, Signature Ford is in Grono County bid, package 45314, no graphics.
Okay. You're correct. So, okay, so in my mind, we could extrapolate. If they were that close with no graphics, and we had to add graphics, I extrapolated from other bid what graphics might cost, and then they would even be a higher bid. I guess that was kind of where I was at with that.
Okay. My other concern is, and this is just me, okay? When I look at the bids for the graphics, I look at $1,100, I think, was Grono, something in that area, and then I look at Amors, which is almost $2,000 something, $1,800 difference in the bids. There are different qualities of material, there are different ways, and I don't know what this 48-inch by 48-inch thing on the back, this Chevron, they call it.
Chevron's are required by the state of Michigan when you have a vehicle working on the highway, so it's those orange, or yellow and black decal, delineate the back of the vehicle, so it makes it look like it gets smacked when you park alongside it.
Grono, Grono, the guy in Detroit did not put that on his package.
Okay.
The other, Amors dip.
Amors price, when I looked at Amors price, and we talked about it, it felt like Amors price, piece by piece, was significantly higher, and to me, it took them out of the market.
Yeah, it is high.
Okay.
But it does not, what I'm saying is that the other bid does not include...Amors included everything. The other, the guy in Detroit did not.
And that, okay, so except that to be true, even knowing that, and knowing what Amors price for Chevrons are, I believe I'd get those cheaper rather than paying a higher price. I see I didn't satisfy your needs for exact near image of each other, and I suppose that might be difficult to get, but we did the best we could, what we had at that point, I guess is what I would say at this point.
I'm have, it's, the more I go through it, the more inconsistencies I find, and I'm sorry, I just, it just doesn't work for me. It's simple, it's rather simple. You do a spec sheet, and you send it to people, and they give you the estimate. They don't have a spec sheet. Everybody's all over the morgue. Everybody's putting something different in.
That's part of the bid process, you know? They were approved for a budget for a vehicle. They went out, they got their bids. They know best what they need, they're the ones working the bids, they know what was included, and they chose the best price for what their needs were. And they know their needs better than any of us can tell what their needs are.
I have no problem with that. My problem is that I feel like I owe the taxpayers, City of Manistee, due my due diligence and do the very best that I can to make sure they get every...
We did our due diligence. We looked at the budget, we gave them the approval to buy a vehicle, we asked that they go out and get bids. They secured bids for $43,400, the budget was $60,000. I think they did do their due diligence.
Okay. I know they did a lot of hard work, it's right here. They did a lot of...
Just because they didn't go and get the bids from the people you thought they should, that's what we pay them to do, to solicit the bids. They know the equipment that they need, they know what they're getting, more so than what we do.
I share Councilman Zalinski's concerns. As you go through and you look at the bids, it's difficult to determine that you're looking at apples to apples. Manistee Ford bids an F-350, two other dealers bid an F-250. It's difficult to determine whether or not the two state bids are for the same equipment configuration on the vehicles. Realizing that there was $60,000 budgeted through the budgeting process, and we have a bid for $43,400, you know, if we can get a vehicle for $42,000, we would still save money in addition to that for the taxpayers, and I think that's the issue. I'm not sure that, and I know I spoke with the chief earlier, I think, you know, what do we need in the vehicle? What kind of towing capacity do we need? What are we going to tow with the vehicle? What workload capacity do we need? I mean, there's...
Again, I think we're getting bogged down in the details. That is, his department, they know what they need, they know what their vehicle needs to haul, they know what the performance needs to be, better than us. Again, our role up here is to set policy, to set ordinances, to provide the big picture, to set the budget. We pay staff to run their departments, determine what they need to run their departments, and to run within the budget. To sit here and to pick out, well, you didn't get the bid from this person, or you didn't compare apples to apples, they know what they need, they went out and looked at the various pieces of equipment that were being offered, and did the comparison and did the price shopping.
My job is also to get the best value for the public taxpayers' dollars. I'd like to make the motion at this point to table this second motion.
Table it to a specific date, I think you have to table, motion tables are required to...
I'm sorry?
When you make a motion to table, man, this come up a couple of years ago, I think, you have to table it to a specific future council date. So you can do it for the next council meeting.
The next one is...
Is there a deadline on these quotes that you have to buy?
I don't believe that they're tied to a specific date, though.
Do we vote on it, or?
Yeah, if you have any discussion on the motion to table of that.
There's no discussion on the motion to table.
Shall we please take the roll? Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow?
No.
Councilmember Pannier?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
No.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the consideration of a settlement, amendment, and reaffirmation agreement with Reese Riley. The City of Manistee was defendant, and Reese Riley an intervening party in a lawsuit involving Edward Sang, Sang Dock and Trucking Incorporated, and Sang Lane Company, as plaintiffs regarded the Sang Peninsula property. Reese Riley was dismissed from the lawsuit, and the City of Manistee was granted summary disposition as to the claims brought against it by the plaintiffs. Reese Riley has appealed the decision regarding its dismissal from the lawsuit. The city has negotiated with Reese Riley a resolution that would recognize Reese Riley's claim that its consent would be necessary to amend the development agreement between the city and Sang entities, which would resolve the appeal with respect to the city. Proposed settlement, amendment, and reaffirmation agreement is attached. The city attorney has approved the agreement. Is there a motion to take action?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Beaton, supported by Councilmember Zalinski, to approve the motion. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to thank Mr. Sadow for all his hard work.
Shall we please take the roll? Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Pannier?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of applications to boards and commission. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on Airport Authority, Board of Review, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Compensation Commission, Downtown Development Authority, Harbor Commission, Historic District Commission, PEG Commission, and the Planning Commission. All appointments by the mayor subject to council approval unless otherwise specified by statute or ordinance. Nominations for council appointments do not require second. After a member of council nominates an individual for appointment, council shall vote on the nomination. A majority vote in favor of placement in the nominee is required for appointment. The following applications have been received. Airport Authority, one vacancy, term ending 11/30/19. This is the city's nomination to the County Airport Authority. It's a mayoral appointment. Received one applicant, Barry Peterson, of 575 Eighth Street. I'd like to appoint Barry Peterson to the vacancy on the Airport Authority, term ending 11/30/19.
I'll support the mayor's appointment.
I have a motion by Councilmember Zalinski, supported by Councilmember Goodspeed, to appoint Barry Peterson to the Airport Authority. Will you please take the roll? Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Pannier?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
And Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Board of Review, there is one vacancy, no applicants. Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, there is one vacancy, no applicants. Compensation Commission, there are two vacancies, no applicants. Historic District Commission, one vacancy, no applicants. The Housing Commission, there is one vacancy, term ending 5/31/20. This is a mayoral appointment. We had one applicant, Krista McDougall, of 2910 Maple Road. I'd like to appoint Ms. Krista McDougall to the Housing Commission, term ending 5/31/20.
I'll support the mayor's.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, supported by Councilmember Zalinski, to appoint Krista McDougall to the Housing Commission, term ending 5/31/20. Shall we please take the roll? Councilmember Whitlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Pannier?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. PEG Commission, there are three vacancies, two terms ending 12/31/18, one term ending 12/31/19. Applicants must be Manistee County resident. This is a council appointment. There was one applicant, Roger Zalinski, by 29 First Street.
I'd like to make a motion to support Roger, recommend Roger.
To which term? I have a motion by Councilmember Beaton to appoint Roger Zalinski to a term on the PEG Commission, ending 12/31/18. Will you please take the roll? Councilmember Pannier?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a special work session in November. The city manager has requested that council schedule a special work session for Tuesday, November 29, 2016, to begin the annual strategic plan update, the Alliance for Economic Success. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Zalinski, supported by Councilmember Smith, to add the special work session for Tuesday, November 29. Is there any discussion? So now we please take the roll. Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Pannier?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to notices, communications, and announcements. Rather part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. Tonight, we'll hear from Ms. Sarah Helge, who referred on activities the Ramstow Regional Center of the Arts.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Helge, president of the Ramstow Regional Center for the Arts Board. This is Nancy Ferguson, secretary. Thanks for letting us be here tonight. The first thing we want to do is make sure everyone knows about this concert. Friday night, musicians from Interlochen presenting the Class International Music Festival. We are so lucky to have them, and they're excited to be able to perform at our local center. This is, they're playing a concert that they presented in Italy this past summer, and this is its North American premiere. Tickets are available at MyNorthTickets.com and at the box office the night of the concert, and we hope to see everybody there. Everybody. You know, it takes a village to run a lively arts center. We can have a very good executive director and a talented willing board, but it takes patrons willing to invest time and money into the programming there. Interlochen faculty is bringing four concerts here, this Friday, November 18, again in April, and it'll culminate in a student concert, a student recital in May. Our fundraising letter and donor envelope will go out Thursday. Both our programming committee and our fundraising committee are busily planning for 2017. We've accomplished several short-term goals that we've laid out for ourselves, and we're working on some long-range goals also. One of the short-term goals that's going to be recognized real soon is a new website, separate from just being part of the city's website. It will be up and running, and Mike Terry is working on content for that, and we're also working on a new logo. Lease extensions for the remainder of this year have been offered to both Manistee Art Institute and the Manistee Civic Players. Neither have signed as of yet. MAI will be vacating the building as of December 31. MCP has also been offered an agreement for 2017 that includes free storage for costumes and props, although they will vacate their office space as of December 31. MCP has requested and been granted performance dates for four productions in 2017. As the RRCA board moves forward into the position of being an employer, we have decided to search for and hire a new executive director and a part-time facilities manager. The personnel changes we make will be within our budget, and we are posting the position of executive director tomorrow. We thank city employee Mike Terry for leading us through this transition. He's left this facility in a much better situation than when he found it, and we are grateful for that. And we also would like to thank the Ramstow's custodian, Sarah Kader, for her services as well. Are there questions for us?
I've got a question. You said that the Civic Players have been granted four dates for 2017, yet we have no agreement with them. How's that going to work?
Well, I think we're just waiting on finalizing some things, but I think they're ready to sign that. And actually, I didn't mean four dates, I meant four production...
Four production periods.
Yeah, yeah.
Is this new model rental agreement, or is it based on ticket sales, as it hasn't been in the past?
It's a rental agreement, not based on ticket sales.
Thank you.
Is the executive director, who you're going to be hiring, is that going to be part-time or full-time?
Full-time.
And you're going to hire custodians, your own, or?
We're actually trying to make the custodial responsibility into a bigger, well, a position that has more responsibility. It'll be a sound and light person, person who's going to be responsible for logistics, for the operations of certain things like the box office.
Setting up for events.
Setting up for events, that type of thing. So it'll be much more than just custodial.
Jack of all trades.
Yes.
Is that going to be full-time or part-time?
We're planning part-time right now.
Okay, given the existing salary structure that we have with our current employees, what sort of change are you anticipating with new employees? In the same salary range, a higher salary range, or?
Probably in the same salary range, but we probably won't be able to pay benefits. We'll include that in a salary, and they'll find their own insurance and other benefits.
And this will be an employee of your organization versus the city?
Right, right. That's what our lease calls for.
Sarah, I have a question. I think I heard you say that you're developing your own website, which I think is great, but you want to make it suffer from the city's website? Why would you do that? I don't understand the logic behind that.
Well, because it's somewhat confusing, I'd say, for the public. They don't always know where to find us, and we think we should, I think we should have our own.
I would hope that it would still be linked to the city, so people can find you if they're on the city website?
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that you weren't cutting that source off.
No, thank you. Yeah, any link is great, thanks. Anything else?
Thank you for all the hard work you're doing.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next, we'll move on to concerns and comments.
City comment, this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement, since an attendant shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, which are limited in five minutes. Let us know if council will not be publicly read. Yes. Please come forward, state your name and address, please.
Alan Marsh from nine-fourteen Vine Street. I would like to say thank you for your twelve years of service, Mayor Kenny, and the six years I served with you is an honor, so, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to come on? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Carol Casco, six-ten Spruce Street. First of all, I'd like to thank Sarah for an enthusiastic and informative update on Ramstow, appreciated that. Then, I would like to comment on something that happened last week, or last meeting. We're always looking for people to volunteer, to be on boards, commissions, and so on, and we had two people who had volunteered to serve on the planning commission. They were mayoral appointments. One of them was Councilwoman Beaton's husband, the other person was the one who was chosen by the mayor. She gave her two reasons why she chose that person, and council chose not to even consider them. That bothered me greatly, because at least I would have thought you would have discussed it, and given reasons why you didn't agree with what she, what the mayor proposed. It also said to me, well, then I'll leave it at that. It bothered me. I would also like to say, as a taxpayer, I appreciate your concerns, but I also feel that the people who are in charge of our services and other things do know what they're doing, and they do the very best they can when they're making these, and I'm a taxpayer. And finally, I want to thank Colleen, Mayor Kenny, for twelve years. When Colleen started, I didn't, I had never met her. We disagreed on a lot of things. I disagreed occasionally with things that came up at council, but I always saw a person with great integrity, with a love for the city of Manistee, and a desire to make the city of Manistee a better place. And you have done that, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Does anyone else who'd like to comment? See, now we'll move on to officials and staff. City clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. City manager?
Nothing.
City attorney?
I could not be as eloquent as Carol was, but I too like to thank Mayor Kenny. It's been a pleasure working with you and for you, and all of us.
Thank you. I'd like to say to you, Director?
In this state, Mayor, I'm glad we could not do it, but thank you again for your service, and I appreciate it. We appreciate it.
City engineer?
Nothing, Your Honor, but a shorter period of time, but I appreciate working with you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you so much for your service. I know it's not always been easy, but I know there's a lot of things that have gotten accomplished, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilmember Zelinski?
Thank you for your service. Thank you for being somewhat patient with me at times, and I appreciate it, and have the joy not having to do this for a while. I'm sure you will.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
I'm gonna miss you, kid. You know, there's times we hated each other, there's times we enjoyed each other, and I just, you bet, you think it's just that, is all I ask for. I miss you, kid.
Thanks. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you for your service.
Councilmember Woodlow?
I just want to thank you for, it's been an honor, sorry, it's been an honor to serve with you for three years. You've guided the city through some turbulent times. You've always been professional, and had the best interests of the city, and I hope whoever the next mayor is will take, will follow in your steps. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Pannier?
I just would like to echo that, I know I haven't worked very long with you, but thanks for your service, and I wish you good luck in the future.
Thank you. I have a couple things. First off, I just want to address some stuff, I saw some emails concerning, again, I just want to remind council of our council policy. We are to, if we have questions or concerns, such as we did about the trucks, the pickups, we need to work through our city manager and not directly contact city employees. That's our policy, so I just wanted to remind council of that. Secondly, this is my last official council meeting, I do have a work session, but I do want to say that I appreciate and felt honored to have served the city for twelve years. I have learned a lot about city government, our government. I learned a lot about why we can do things and why we can't do things. Sometimes it felt like putting a square peg in a round hole at times, but I've learned a lot, but mostly, I'm really grateful for the relationships and the people I got to know, not only through the city, I got to know the city staff, and I got to know just what a great staff the city has, and we should be grateful. They know their business, they have a lot of integrity, and there isn't one of them that doesn't work hard and beyond what they're asked to do, their job descriptions, in working for the city. I also got to know a lot of people working on the various boards and commissions, and